Six thirty, I call the Halifax Planning Board into session. Good? On the agenda, we have six thirty, Rich Green informal discussion for sign at RJ Automotive at nine twenty-five Plymouth Street, public hearing. Number nineteen SPR dash one, one thirty-nine Hemlock Lane Mudfest. Six fifty-five, we have continuation of special permit for Joe Murray Dunkin' Donuts. Seven o'clock, we have informal, formal, informal rego discussion for Winnetuxte way off of Fuller Street. And seven ten, we have a farm A for Webby Engineering on Fuller Street, nineteen A dash two. Then we have bills and minutes to go over. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
Make motion to accept the agenda as read?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Rich, you're up first.
Just two of these folders, if you guys want to look at them, that's what I wanted to do. Some pictures of a current sign and what I want to do. Have to change it because I'm incorporated now. The state told me to change it. I just want it to look aesthetically correct.
Going to this?
Yeah. It's going to say, how'd you automotive it though?
Yeah, yeah.
I just, not that good at Photoshop and add and yet.
Pretty good. Okay, so...
Looks like the bylaws allow me to increase the size because I'm a hundred and one feet back from the road. I just did your formula, come up with a size.
And the formula came out to that size?
Yeah, I wrote it all down there. On this scale, try to write it all down.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I thought, I'll have to double check. I thought that it was two feet for the words per hundred feet.
A hundred and one feet off the road.
Okay. I'm just curious how you came up with two extra feet for the height, for the height of the letters.
Well, it says here I can increase it by twenty-five percent, so I'm just increasing it by twenty-five percent total area. I'm trying to make it look aesthetically correct. I mean, I don't want a seventy-foot or a fifty-eight-foot sign, two feet high, it's not going to look right.
Yeah, the only thing is, is when I do the math, I would come up with it, you could increase it by six inches, is just what I'm coming up with. Just because it says that you're allowed a twenty-five percent increase for every hundred feet, and you're a hundred feet back, so you get a twenty-five percent increase on the two feet.
Well, that's why I'm here.
Yeah.
Looking for an issue to do and what I want to do.
Okay. No, that's cool. I just, I don't think that, I think what you're asking for is greater than what our, what we have allowed.
There was some confusion, the way it read to me and with the building inspector, so he recommended I come here.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not saying you can't do it, I just, I don't know if we have to go, if it needs a, needs to be a special permit, because I don't know if we can grant that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, yeah.
Know what I need to do, continue following you.
You're looking to come in under the provision for being a hundred feet back.
Mm-hmm.
Is allowed twenty-five percent more.
So I don't think that the six inches, I don't think that's enough, like you want more than that, yeah.
Yeah.
So not exceed two feet.
And the length shall not extend.
Yeah, so he's, he's okay on that. My only issue would be that we can allow the increase for every hundred feet, so there's one, twenty-five percent of the forty-eight. And the increase may be prorated according to the actual respective distance.
I think you have to come back for a special permit. You're looking to go toward for height, four feet.
Yeah.
I need something.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Three and a half to four feet, and I don't even want to ask a sign guy to make me a quote until I have measurements.
Right.
I've already put, made signs when I first put the building up, and it was misery, so here we are.
Yep. No, it's cool. I think, I think what we can grant you isn't big enough, is what I'm saying. I think, I think if you apply for a special permit, basically you'd have to come in, there would be a meeting, see if anybody had an issue with it.
Come in where?
Here.
Oh, I thought that's what I was doing.
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, it's just a technical step that you would have to take, you would have to...
Because they would have to come in under a hearing.
Do you know what we're having, or?
No, so, so, yeah. Problem being...
Like, we have a hearing coming up right after you, which goes into the newspaper, and everybody gets notified of that.
Okay.
So, we would have to do that process in order, okay.
Yeah, because I don't want to, if I granted you what we have the power to do right now, it's not going to be big enough.
Definitely.
Like, you want, you know what I mean? You might as well go for what you want.
Yeah, let's go for the, whatever I have to fill out.
Sure, agreed. So if you could go through Terry and just fill out the application for the hearing.
Okay.
And then she posts it, and it's, it's going to be in the paper. I don't think we could do it at the next meeting.
That's fine.
It would be, we'd take another meeting in between in order, for the timing for the newspaper.
And if...
That way, you can, you can ask for whatever you'd like, it's, I think you'd be better off.
Do you want me to leave this with you guys?
You can leave that if you want, yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll have...
Do you have an idea where we're at?
Yep.
Okay, so I see Terry afterwards, and she'll put me on a...
Yeah, she'll, she'll have you fill in an application for the hearing.
For a special hearing?
Yep.
Okay.
For a special, a public hearing, for the special permit.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
I guess I'm done, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Time being six thirty-five, I have a motion to suspend the planning board meeting and open up the public hearing.
Motion to suspend the current meeting and open up public hearing for nineteen SPR zero one, one thirty-nine Hemlock Lane Mudfest.
Okay. Terry, is there a second down?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hopefully she's got the...
I think it's on.
No, no, but we, we need the notice for the hearing to be read in.
Notice a public hearing, the Halifax Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February seventh, twenty nineteen at six thirty-five PM, Meeting Room One, Town Hall four ninety-nine, Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, on the application of Robert Bergstrom by Christopher J. Alson, Alphen, Esquire of Flatman, Brouki, sorry, Inhabity LLC, Nine Damon Mill Square Suite four A four Concord Mass zero one seven four two, to seek approval of site plan and asking all waivers of site plan requirements under the town of Halifax zoning bylaws, Chapter one sixty-seven twenty-eight, to allow the event known as Mudfest on the property located at one thirty-nine Hemlock Lane, Halifax, Massachusetts. Set property is owned by Nazarela Company, one thirty-nine Hemlock Lane, Halifax, Mass, as shown on the assessor's map, number fifty-one lot one, map thirty-nine lot two, and map fifty-one lot two-two-four. The applicant seeks approval and waivers of all site plan requirements in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax, under section one sixty-seven twenty-eight, areas zoned agricultural residential petition number one nine SPR zero one.
Okay. So we're opening up the public hearing now for the site plan. The way that operates is, all the questions come through the chairman, if anybody has a question, need to be recognized, ask the question. So first off, we'll ask the applicant to propose whatever it is they're proposing, and then we'll have discussion on that.
My proposal is to continue holding the Mudfest at that location that we've been doing since November of two thousand thirteen. And what I'm requesting is you guys approve the engineered plan and find that it's, you know, correct, safe, and up to your, what you expect an event like this to be at, and doing what I'm supposed to be doing, and request for the special permit to temporary change the land into the commercial or industrial, you know, like the article fifty-seven that we just passed. For two days a year, I hold a spring fest, you know, fall fest, and those are the two days a year that I request just a temporary special permit, just to change the zoning temporarily, be able to hold that event at one thirty-nine Hemlock.
Okay. Just, this is your first time before the board, so this board is not familiar with what goes on at all, so, you know.
I, inside the packets, I've, I've put in a whole bunch of flyers that have photo trip graphs of the big trucks that go through those mud holes. If you see on the map, you'll see three areas on there, called pits, pit one, pit two, pit three.
Okay.
Everybody should have one. In color, how can we go black and white?
It's okay.
Oh, we just have to go up to all the departments, so we...
Oh, all right.
He gets the faint too.
He's got the hood on, he's got the hood on. It's done in crayon too, did you notice that? So, these are pits here, and we have trucks, this is where all our pit guys park their big trucks. And they'll come out here, and they'll run through the pits, you know, big trucks, small trucks, all sorts of trucks, to see who can get the furthest, to, you know, get the crowd to get going and all that. And they come around, and we basically have staffing every there, it's cleared, nobody's out there, we have fire, ambulance, everybody that needs to be there, and they go through the mud, and it's slow speed, you know, some are faster than the other, you know, but your top speed, you're probably looking at twenty-five, you know, because they can get a good run going. We have Jersey barriers, you know, we, we've been doing this since two thousand thirteen, and my insurance tells me what I have to do. So we have the proper feet between pits, from the, we doubled our footage from the pit to the people with the barriers. You know, we have barriers in and out, we have staff everywhere to traffic details and help the handicap people when they come in. And this is all our parking down here. It's, it's forty-two acres, it's my belief. Our pits don't even take up like an acre of it, you know? But this is all the cornfield area during season for growing.
Now, as far as I can say, none of this is going to be a permanent structure.
Oh, no.
Everything, as far as you guys clear out of there, there's no difference, nothing's, no permanent structures at all.
Nope, we leave the Jersey barriers, but Nazarela doesn't mind those things, you know, there's thousands of pounds of peas, so I'm glad he lets me keep them there. But that's basically it, we do it, A, for Nazarela Farm, it helps supplement their income, you know, at one point, they were very close and very behind taxes back in two thousand thirteen, that was the beginning of this, to help him out, fortunately, it did, you know, so these two events help him greatly, you know, they can buy corn for the corn maze and all that stuff, and secondary, the kids love it, the young kids. And then, you know, last but not least, we have a younger generation, instead of being in the house playing video games, they're outside building their mud trucks and their Jeeps and their trucks just for this event twice a year. So I think it's great for the town, I like to continue it, you know, we've hit some hiccups during the way, and I'm hoping that this is our final straw, and with your guys' approval, Mudfest is here forever, you know, I'm hoping.
The issues I see are, are just with the plan itself. Like, I think the overall scheme of what you're doing there is acceptable, I do think it's decent for the town, the problems I have is actually with, with the plan.
That's what Webby engineers, is what they did.
Just as far as, like, what it shows in the limit. It, it's tough for me to really look at this, and it's kind of a cartoon in, in my mind, as far as, without, like, dimensions and things like that, there are certain things that I think that...
I asked him...
I wouldn't ask for any changes as far as what you have proposed, just more information on the plan, I think that I would require.
We have, he scaled it, and he said they can get the information he wants and that, so on and so forth. He said if, everything could be answered on this, for that, because we, we meet the setbacks from property lines and all that, from our conservancy areas over here, and...
By scale, it looks like it, but I, what I would like to see is some actual numbers on here from the engineer to say, like, I'd like to see that we could keep this pretty far away, I mean, I can't see how far away you are from anybody, I assume you are.
Yeah, there's no houses here, no houses anywhere around here.
So I think, I think it would be fairly easy for them to kind of prove that.
Oh, the attached packet is an aerial view, and I think there was...
But I think, in my mind, it has to be on this, it has to be on the plan that you submit.
I'll run it by them, but this is what they gave me, and they said that this should be sufficient and enough.
I don't know if you want to take a list, but there are a couple of things that I would be looking forward to add to this.
Is anybody in agreement with that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we could all discuss it.
I think the one reason why Mark is saying that is because there's a couple bylaws that do show, like, boundary points as far as, like, where stuff's supposed to be, so it's just easier for us, like...
By stuff, what do you mean by stuff?
So like, for example, parking, where, where your toilets are, and, you know, for example, where you're having in the event itself. I'm just stating from a fact, like, if, if, if it's more what Mark is saying up to scale, because, I mean, Mark used to create these kinds of plans before, so he, he had, he has an idea of what he, what he's looking for, and Webby knows how to create them, and I think the more up to scale things would be a lot easier for us to determine.
One of the other factors is, I mean, this is something we're looking to put in a folder.
Yeah.
We've got to have more detail on here than that. I mean, that's why in our site plan, we require the plans to have that information.
Oh, absolutely, because I asked, I asked him that, and I have a, I have a plan myself, kind of similar to this, that actually has measurements on it, that I gave him to use as a...
So I think there's certain questions that are going to be, like, how far away from this, like, it doesn't actually tell me that this is fifty acres, this could seriously be like three hundred feet for all I know. So like, if we had, that's something I definitely would need, like, all the actual lot requirements, even just a scaled distance to show me that these houses are hundreds of feet away, I believe they are, but I think that this should show this. I think if this could show everyone clearly that we are hundreds of feet away from everything, it would help. So, those are things that...
All right, sorry for wasting your time.
No, no, it's not a waste of time.
No, no.
This is part of the process.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just frustrated because Webby told me, goes, "It should be sufficient," and he says he deals with you guys. I just go by what people tell me, and, you know, I find it very misleading at some times and stuff. I didn't know about this meeting until Charlie posted it on Halifax, you know what I mean?
Your own attorney sent a certified letter.
My attorney was, I wasn't though.
No, but the...
It's Robert Bergstrom, it's not.
But the application, excuse me, the application came in under his name for you, so I was obligated to send it to him.
Either way, I think that these are things that we can address easily enough, you know what I mean?
It's pricey, she says I'm not supposed to make money off of this, and it's coming out of my pocket, I'm just very frustrated at this point. If you need, what, numbers, distances?
Yeah.
Total amount of cars? The same thing I did for the music fest, right, that I was trying to do at Nazarela Farm that started all this.
I don't think that came in front of here, I don't think you came to us, so...
I was planning on what, I did a mapping of it and all that, how many cars, how many handicaps.
For which?
Nazarela Farm, Fieldstone Farms, I mean, Fieldstone Farms, Scott Colson.
Oh, okay, I know one oh six.
Years ago, I was trying to do a country fest, and this is what started this Mudfest thing, so...
Yeah, but really, all boundary lines, lot dimensions, setbacks, those things, and...
How many vehicles can be held, do we have to do emergency evacuation stuff, all that?
Well, certainly if they could, even just a couple distances to show us, I believe that you're providing hundreds of feet of parking.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't think that there's a problem, I just think that this has to show these things. So I don't, right off the bat, I'm not saying that any of these things need to change, I'm saying more information needs to be on the plan.
Like I said, Webby, he's like, "Oh, there's a scale there if they need to get numbers and stuff," he goes, "This should work for him," I've doubled them, "Here you go, Bob."
It's just not, it's just not enough for me to go off of.
This much money, thank you, bye, you know, it's like, "All right, thanks bud, hope it works." And the Boston courts just want this done with before it continues, ZBA myself, being brought to court by...
The only thing that is questioned is that it's an event on an already, on an already existing lot, and it's a temporary event, so would, would it need, I mean, I get the, the setbacks and stuff, because you get a, the only, the only reason why I'm concerned about setbacks is because, so you're, you know, the people, I don't know if there's people over here.
Yeah, I know, that's cranberry bogs.
Those cranberry bogs, but it's just, it's just so that they don't give you, you know, troubles in the future, when, if people come by here with a fine-tooth comb and be like, "Well, why did they approve something like that when it's so close?"
Yeah.
But that's, that's my only, that's my only concern, but my other side...
I wish my lawyer was here, he's away at the time, but he put a packet together for me that I copied, and he gave a, a view, I believe it's in the package, with, with this perimeter showing that, and then showing where...
Yeah, so if you could throw all that information all on this, and then...
On one piece of paper.
That way it's lock, stock, and barrel, I don't have to deal with that again.
I mean, one of the, one of the factors is, this is, you're coming before us for a site plan, I mean, if we just said, okay, we're, we're just going to waive everything, then there's no site plan.
Well, that's my misunderstanding, I don't understand why we're here anyhow, in some aspects.
Well, because we need to have something on a plan, I mean, that's what the law requires, that we, we need a site plan.
I get, absolutely.
We need to have that site plan, we need to have a hearing that's open for the people to come in and voice their opinion, up, down, whatever.
Absolutely, so we're just missing numbers.
Just more information on this, yeah.
More numbers, feet.
Yeah, just some, yep.
All right, I'll tell them this.
We should get a stamp and a date of an engineer this.
Yeah, Webby should know, Webby should have provided you a...
Well, that's, that's the thing, isn't it?
It's very, it's actually very confusing why he would...
I'm confused about this whole process.
Work, just work with us.
Yeah, you just understand, there's not enough information on this for us to act.
It's frustrating, it's, it's, you know, it's been doing it since two thousand thirteen, you know, it's, it's just, some people just don't like me.
The better, the better detailed it is, the less problems we're going to have in the future, just work with us, and we'll, we'll help you give you the best advice possible.
Yep, no, I'll talk to Webby and see what he can pull up, because he was down there physically, that's how he got what he has there.
Yeah, so it looks like he's got the rough sketch going, so just...
Yeah, and like I said before, I did have measurements from, I wish I had it with me, I couldn't find my packet, but it actually had the footage from everything, so, you know, from the setbacks from the fence, because it's, because it's insurance-wise, I had to submit that to them also, you know, so, I get it.
But if we're, but if we're going to approve a site plan, we need to have something that works.
And the more information, I think...
Do you want smaller scale? Work on it as normal paper size, or...
No, I mean, we call out the scale in the, in the site plan, I mean, he has a whole copy of that, he can, you know, can do it by this.
Fire department is okay with it as...
Do we have recommendations? Police Department, Fire Department? Wouldn't hurt.
No, because it's already gone through the board of selection and the zoning.
But as far as your scaling goes, if you do let them know that, I don't think we need two perspective view on this either, so like, one large scale should be fine, because if you drew this in a twenty scale, you'd have five pages of plan, I don't...
See, I don't know none of that, if he handed me this, I'm like, ooh, you know?
Yeah.
Question, have you reached out to the Fire Department or the Police, Police Department to ask for recommendations? Sometimes it just helps, just having...
Recommendations for...
Just saying, like, you know, it's always been a good event, or whatever.
Oh, yeah, no, they, they, they sit with me with meetings.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure they do, all I'm saying is, recommendations don't hurt.
Oh, would have them write something up, that they love the Mudfest kind of thing?
Because it's been sent out to the other...
You know, if, I'm just saying from a fact, that it doesn't, it doesn't hurt, because what happens is that it, it kind of clarifies that if that, if the Fire Department knows, knows it, knows it's safe, then we can tell based off of the specs here that, you know, they, they can turn around in time and no one's going to come back to, and after the town.
Yeah.
You know, and then police, if there's enough room for them to come in and...
Yep, we have about thirty-foot lines everywhere.
But that's what I'm saying, like, that, that kind of stuff doesn't hurt, we've seen people do it in the past, and it just...
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm held insurance-wise to a very strict guideline itself, and then police and fire, but I've doubled all the numbers that I'm supposed to be legally through the insurance and stuff, so...
Yeah, well, the way this works is, all the departments get notified, they have thirty days to get back to us, we have forty-five days to make a decision.
After I get the new...
Well, we're in the hearing at this point.
Okay.
Okay, so the hearing's in progress. We can, we can suspend the hearing and then open it up next week if you have more information to bring in, and we'll continue the hearing till then.
If you, if you feel that's necessary, correct, at this point?
Could.
Yeah, without those other things, I'm not going to do it.
Absolutely, you're not in, you're probably not in and all that until we see more, correct?
Yeah, but we're, we're in an open hearing right now, so we're going to ask if anybody else has any comments to make right now.
All right, so then I'll just sit down then.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the...
Mr. Chair, Michael, the board's already gone over some of the items, the boarding nature, for instance, the area of the sites and the split acreage or square footage should be on the plan. Your, the boundary lines are there, the dimensions of the lots should be there, you know, the plot lot numbers, I believe, are mentioned on the plan, so that's helpful. There's no mention of the zoning districts, I believe, at least one of the lots that's mentioned, some of that's in the conservancy, some of it's in agricultural residential, there's no information about the zoning of the parcel. You're supposed to have the names of the owner of record and all the abutting owners on the plan, also on North Point. I don't think you need the perspective renderings in this case, or any of the plans for the buildings and structures, because for this use, you're not doing anything. I mean, the buildings and structures, as I think they are, are on the plan, that are already on there, as far as they know, all of them, I mean...
Non-permanent structures of...
Well, there's, yeah, I mean, the greenhouses, for instance, are on the plan, I think there's some sort of building near the front of the property, I don't know if there's any others, I'm hoping that all the buildings that are situated on the property now that are permanent are on the plan, I haven't been out to the site myself. I, you know, there's number three, which is location of existing structures, we talked about that, access roads, the driveways, et cetera, make sure that everything is in number three, all the requirements is on the plan. I didn't see any, any indication of fire lanes, I don't know whether the fire chief has explored that, but, and when given the number of people, the number of vehicles that are going to be at the event, normally you'd have fire lanes, if you went to Walmart, there's a fire lane, if you went to Stop and Shop, it's a fire lane, you're going to have far fewer vehicles at those locations, and here, I would think you'd want it to have, on the plan designated fire lanes, so emergency vehicles, whether it's police or fire, can get in and out, just which was a safety for everybody who's there. I know there's mention of the trash barrels, I don't know if there's a central collection site, since I expect, given how long the event is, barrels are going to have to be emptied out on a regular basis, the individual barrels are located there, they're not on the plan, but I don't know if there's a central facility.
There's a fire lane, there's thirty feet in front of the, oh, the whole side, this right here is all wide open, all right down, right here.
There's no designation that that's a fire lane.
Oh, it is, it's all...
But it's not on the plan.
It's not real, man.
Yeah, exactly.
But, but these are, these are all orange fencing, if they really have to go, we just move a fence, like, if it's...
So it's another thing where I think that you can provide that, no problem. So it's another thing where I think that you can provide that, no problem, so, i- if you could just, even just have them, have them just draw one little, you know, draw that in of, you know, thirty feet.
Yeah, we got a thirty feet, they, they.
You have, you have the room, it's not gonna stop, yeah, just, just designate it on the plan.
Okay, Charlie isn't finished yet.
But then, um, rights of ways and easements, I'm assuming there are none, I, I should, the applicant should check with the owner to make sure there are, they should be drawn to plan, since obviously there's rights of those people who have easements or rights of way across the property. If there are any, would be affected, at least for informational purpose, they should be on there. You already mentioned getting the name of the engineer, a date and a stamp from the engineer on the plan, that's normal procedure under the clearance. And lastly, I just have a concern of whether or not the plan as drawn meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw. In that, if you take the larger plan, which I believe is the one that has the two hundred feet to one inch measurement, is everything at least, that all the activities, are they at least one, I, I mean, are they far enough away from the various boundary lines to meet the stipulations of the zoning bylaw? I don't know, I assume the applicant is saying they are, I just would like that confirmed.
But based on that plan, you can't really tell.
Right, so, you know, things need to be moved in order to comply with a hundred, I think it's a hundred feet away from the boundary line for any activities. That includes parking and everything else, and.
See, these are things that I think that you can provide just after show.
We'll compare notes down at Webby's and all that, cause we've already been through this at one point, we did do it all.
Okay.
Uh, we're sorry that you got that, but we're like over a, you know, hundred and fifty feet here, you know?
Yeah.
It's like the conservancy area is way over here, we're not even near that.
Everything should be shown, is what I'm saying, cause this is gonna be a permanent record.
Exactly.
We're going through this process, he's been able to get this special permit from the zoning board, he's going, going through the site plan review. It's all gonna be documented, everybody is gonna be able to refer to this, it's like, well, here's the actual plan of the event. And it's gonna be much better for everybody, I'm glad the event's continuing, it's a great success for the town and for everybody who participates and the folks who come in to watch, so I'm looking forward to it, but I think everything needs to be documented, that's all.
The existing structures that you're asking for permits for?
Not permits.
I'm not asking for permits, the plan itself, under the town's site plan requirements, the existing structures need to be on the plan. I think that they are.
They are.
But it's, I'm just confirming that there were no other structures that are on the property that aren't on the plan.
Typically, those notes are on there, on the plan, the structures are shown.
To make sure there's no other bonds, anything like that.
Okay, so typically all that is on, is on that plan.
And I'm just trying to help here so that we can move forward and progress on the, on this. You're looking for names of the property.
Of butters.
Of all the butters, yeah.
That's a normal part of any site.
For, on, on the new site plan that he's gonna have you.
Right, yeah.
What happened to me, planning?
Yeah, yeah, so what, what I'm gonna require, we as a board.
That's Morse, that's the grammar in Morse.
Yeah, yeah, so you can show, so you can say, this is, this is person, yeah. And, and that's information that's readily available downstairs also, so.
Just trying to help to make some notes here.
I'm just letting you know that's.
Cause I mean, we are thousands of feet from, from this central point right here out to the edge.
I, I understand that, but, but it's like, if that number is there, then it's big.
Okay.
And I, like, I was shocked when he handed me the, the prints, and I questioned it, and he said, this should be sufficient in there.
Well, nevertheless.
I think you, I think you can meet our requirement.
Oh, that, yeah, sure, well, it's, like I said, I just get frustrated, so.
Alright, well, this is, this is, this is easy.
Get better myself.
This is a simple fix. All we gotta do is oblige to what they're asking, thank you, Gordon.
Get sued by their own people, it's a lot of fun.
I just wanna make sure you're covered with everything. Charlie, did you make mention of the restrooms or the portables?
Um, I, they're all on the list, but they're on the plan.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, what, so I would have that, I don't know where he made water from, is it?
No, no, no.
Well, I hope you have water.
Yeah, no, we have water, not for the cord bars, those are all, you know.
I mean, I don't know, I can tell right there.
Is that something, he has it, right?
Yeah, yeah. That's no, it's not really anywhere where people would stand.
Probably the only thing, yeah, names, there's a lot of, I think the only thing that I see that I would require that you don't have is the north. Which is, yeah, it just lets us know where, where on the street, how it.
Gotcha, gotcha, and Webby will understand that.
Yep.
Gotcha, okay.
But I think between, I think with what you have here, I think that's it.
Terry, Terry's just factoring the list, here's the.
And then, if you wanna write like, all lot dimensions.
Which Webby should have, he has all these.
Which, this, this should have been, it should have been done like that at first, but.
But, but all that stuff's on here, yeah, okay, alright, very good.
One thing to keep in mind too, just, uh, just, I just wanna ask this, cause this has come up now. I just wanna make sure that, I don't want you guys to keep, like, having to spend all your nights coming back and forth here. But I'm assuming to scale, um, when Webby puts all that information in, that that's not a hundred feet. Now, I'm just saying from a fact that I understand that this is probably, and this is the, this is where the assumptions come into play and we can reassess this whole thing once we have the better, the better details, but this is probably just a buffer zone outline of where technically the.
People can't go, yeah.
Right, but, but essentially what I would probably recommend doing is taking a look at the, you know, the hundred foot setback and telling Webby, hey, create something that it makes, that, that you guys can follow, that we won't knock down a problem with that, just make sure that.
We have more expense, we can angle it.
Did you know what I'm saying, like?
Somebody drives over there, cause.
Yeah, and I'd assume that because this is, this is the circle, but.
This is the area where everybody comes in and, and honestly, John, I actually, I believe there is a road.
On the other side.
Access road, that's, oh, so that's way over there, yeah, we, that's way over.
But no, but here's the bound, here's, here's the boundary line, property line.
I see it.
So all I'm just saying is that maybe just so he doesn't have to keep drawing this up and you guys getting, you know, back and forth. Just, just create something, tell him, make sure it's a hundred feet and then just stick to it for the rest.
My drivers don't go over there, I park, I have vehicles parked there, my son, I have my personal.
I'm just saying for the site plan, for what you guys do, just so you kinda cover all ends of the spectrum, that's all.
No, I went through this with the con, so I kinda checked, that's why I was, like I said, I was shocked when I did see all that over there, you know.
Charlie, do you have anything? Does anybody else?
Webby has one of those.
The checklist, yeah.
Is there anybody else from the audience that was there? Alright, so.
So what do I do, do I have to pay money's again, a butters list again, all that stuff again, and?
No, what we can do is.
How do I get back in to see you guys?
Alright, so if you, if you can settle on like the next date that we have, two weeks from now, what we can do is just suspend.
Could be the, the second meeting from now too, it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have to hold it, but next meeting, we'll just suspend this, we'll reopen on a date that you think will work and that way you don't have to re-notify.
Yeah, cause it's probably gonna take a while, it took a while to do this one, so.
So if you wanna wait, we'll suspend it until and then get back to us with a date?
Well, why don't we, we have to set a date. At least the twenty first, because that is our next meeting, hopefully he can have something in place.
You might get it.
You know, if he doesn't, then I'll miss it, and all that.
Tell, tell Webby to try and get it done by twenty first.
No, if you don't have it done, then you come in and we move it some next again, yeah, alright.
Unless it's quicker.
That's good.
Alright, so is there a motion to? Suspend, continue, continue the hearing? To the twenty first.
To continue the public hearing until February twenty first.
For petition, do you have to say that too?
Is that gonna be the forty-five days?
No, our forty-five days is the twenty eighth.
Oh, February or March?
February, so you probably wanna.
Which is the following Thursday.
Which would be the following Thursday after that meeting? Okay, so. We have a motion?
The second.
No, you're making a motion?
Oh, very good, I thought.
Made it?
Yeah.
To the twenty, okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to reopen the planning board meeting?
Motion to reopen the regularly scheduled planning board meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, alright, thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, I think we need to, for, um, Joe Murray, Duncan Donuts, I think we need to, again.
Open reopen?
Close regular, open special permit, um, and then we'll deal with what we have here.
Okay.
Alright, so make a motion to close the.
Suspend regular.
Suspend the current planning board meeting and open the public hearing or continuation of public hearing number eight eight four, special permit, Joe Murray at Duncan Donuts.
Okay, we have a motion as a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, so basically, um, with past discussions on the special permit that he was looking for, um, he is requesting to withdraw the petition without prejudice.
Okay.
Um, so he was able to send a letter and he came in and signed our little form.
Okay.
So you guys would have to make a motion to.
Accept that.
Accept this, and then close the public hearing.
So make a, make a motion to accept the, the withdrawal petition, okay?
Yeah.
Make a motion, well, yeah, make a motion to accept the letter of withdrawal um, by petitioner Joseph Murray, Bike Realty LLC, petition number eight eight four, three fifty-five, Punin Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, zero two three three eight. Date petition filed was eleven fourteen twenty eighteen, signed by Joe Murray himself on the seventh. As a mutual, as a mutual request, he marked off that as a mutual request and agreement of the application petition, the petition is hereby withdrawn without prejudice.
Have a motion as a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So with that being accepted, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm signing, you can work it close.
Make a motion to close the public hearing and return to the regular scheduled planning board meeting.
Your motion is a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion to reopen the regularly scheduled.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, that was a nice little trick right there.
Okay, do we have, uh, Bob Rego?
Hey, uh, Bob Rego, with Real High Convenience, uh, I just came in tonight just for a informal discussion, I just have a question for you, this. Uh, there's a plan of land that was prepared previously by a veteran that, uh, shows, um, the small little subdivision off, um, where was that?
Fuller Street?
Yeah, off, off Fuller Street, it was named Winnetoxit Way. And, uh, one of the conditions on the plan was that, uh, there'd be no further, uh, subdivision of Lot A or construction of a dwelling on Lot B until such time as, uh, Winnetoxit Way was improved to the planning board standards. So I just wanted to come in and, uh, go over the, the procedure that the planning board would like me to follow for improvement of that way. But it's, uh, likely gonna be through a Form C, um, subdivision process, I would, I would guess.
You gotta put a subdivision in?
Well, no, it's gonna be the same thing, it's just really gonna improve that road, we're gonna, we're gonna pave the road and put a cul-de-sac in there so, so we can.
For the intent to.
So you don't wanna add the houses, right?
The intent would be to subdivide lot.
Subdivide, okay.
So you guys can get a hundred and fifty?
Yep.
You can meet subdivision requirement.
Yes, yeah, it would be enough for the two of you, but, yeah.
Alright, that makes sense, they allowed you this with this access for one house, by the time you wanted to, you had to make a real road.
Exactly.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
That's my understanding, you know, I wasn't involved in the original, um, plan preparation or anything.
Makes sense though, they, they wouldn't allow that to service two, but.
Two, but, right.
Okay.
So I just really just wanna come in and get the planning board's opinion on, you know, what would have to be filed in, in order to improve the road.
And you'd have to present us with a definitive plan?
A definitive plan.
Okay.
There's the house here.
And, um, at this time, you know, I don't know if it's, if it's really the best time to ask, but would you, because it is only serving two lots, would, would the, would the board entertain waiving some other, not, you know, full construction, but, but, you know, sidewalks, stuff like that, curbing and stuff to kind of limit.
We don't really do much with curbing.
Yeah, just keep curbing.
Yeah, it's still.
Okay.
Prob, probably not waving.
Not much else, okay.
Yeah.
With the road still the same, do we look to whatever minor street or?
I, I think you'd be stuck with the cul-de-sac because by the time you came of any other configuration, as far as a turnaround.
Yeah, there wouldn't be much space, exactly, yeah, I do think, I do think we'd be doing a, a cul-de-sac.
I would entertain them, I'm just not sure what I can, what, what, nothing pops up off the, that I could think.
Okay. Yeah, and that's reasonable, I, I, I didn't expect it, I, you know, really be able to answer that.
Okay. I mean, that was the whole basis when we approved it was.
Approved initially, sure, yeah.
If it was gonna be divided, it would, would have a road.
Makes sense, yeah.
It did get, I didn't send it out to the conservations on the fifth.
Do you have a copy of our regs?
I, I do, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so, I can't think of anything that, but if.
Alright, yeah, what we'll do is we'll, we'll, we'll come back with a, with a filing and go from there, I guess.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you very much.
Good luck.
That was just a layout.
That's some lot, is that just a, is that a circle? Just like a, a circle?
No, it's just a, it's just a layout for the roadway, I mean, the roadway's gonna fit within this, doesn't fill out at all, it's a garden.
Yeah, weird, that was just to get access.
Well, it was this lot and this one.
And they couldn't just do this?
No, because then this wouldn't have any potential.
They have to keep the hundred and fifty, road furniture.
That is the craziest design ever.
It is, but we can't do.
Let's put some squares inside of circles.
Joe, you have a form A?
Yes. You got Webby, Webby, very in with me.
It's, uh, Bob Murphy.
And this is, uh, right across this. We're just looking at, uh, this, currently a cornfield in this area, and what they would like to do is, didn't even recognize them. He's still got an handle. What we would like to do is apparently this, this house here, here, and we would like to create a twenty-four acre retreat lot. Form a lot or a street, street lot, and rather retreat lot, a street lot, and this one would be a fifteen acre lot. This, these lots go all the way back to Winnetoxit River, that's why it's so big.
Lots that can move down.
So basically, we'd like to create five new lots.
This is obviously an out.
Yeah, yeah, this is, that's sold, that's an out piece, that's an out piece, and then these, and then this is an out piece. Uh, that's Campbell's with that retreat lot up at the.
And where's the Christmas tree on?
Christmas tree, that's on the other side of Ripley, on Wood Street. It's right about.
Yeah, it's just around the car.
Cause the Campbell's just bought that.
Yeah, the Campbell, yeah, I understand Campbell's just bought it. So we have, we have the upland? We have, uh, sure, that one's on all these, those are the access, this.
So we treat this one?
Yeah, this one's all open, yeah, two. Retreat lot, yeah, three.
And this?
Four. And then this, this currently, there's a lot there. We're basically just combining the rest of this land with the other pieces. This was actually already a, no, it wasn't a lot, but it was there.
So how, how does this stand now, this?
These, these four are one?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So those. Yeah, this is, this is a cornfield, yeah, this, this would be a new one. Well, actually, the eight field.
It's a, yeah, they have a field. They reformed it.
Fifty. Just open it through several houses back there?
Yes.
Really, this one you said is just combined?
Yeah, yeah, this one, there was a piece of land in the front that shared with a hundred and sixty feet frontage.
That, the small side lot, yeah.
Yeah, there, there was a lot there, but then we, we, we just.
So you're just erasing that line, basically?
That's correct. And, and basically, and this one, it used to be the back.
You know, these circles are supposed to touch it.
Yes, I was told that, yeah.
Yeah, then do it.
With all the other bylaws that we have now, I don't really.
Well, it's also kinda funny, because we're like, oh, we can put the house here. That's not what we're proposing here, but, so like, what does it really prove?
Well, it's just, you know, it's supposed to.
The lot doesn't come in, but, if you know what I mean, it's.
Yeah, we know the, we know lot, yeah. Then you get the shake factor on the third.
That's what I said, after putting that on, it's like. What's that for, you say?
Questions?
I do not.
Okay, is there a motion to endorse the Form A?
I think a motion to approve the Form A for the plan of land in Halifax, prepared for Phyllis Sanborn Vocal Trust, dated January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, prepared by Webby Engineering Associates.
Your motion is a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you need, uh, seven? Do you need sign caucuses? Are you just gonna keep all your caucuses?
I have them, so, two original, one for town, one for our.
So I don't need to make prints for you?
That's how I wrote the date.
Can I take that with me, Tom?
And I'll be the one that picks that, so you have the other two.
Thank you.
Uh, we have to make sure it gets down to the assessor's office.
Okay, sure. We can handle it.
Sent down to the assessor's office a couple of years ago, I don't know who's it was.
So the registry sent it to you?
Oh, sorry. Well, we are just two.
There's three of them.
Oh, that'd be good.
Yeah, two, three. Sorry, guys.
That'd be nice. Signature stamp.
Not bad, so? Been busy?
Busy as I might be.
Yeah. Locally, or?
Um, yeah, I, I see a pretty full lot subdivision in Plumpton.
South Plumpton, or?
I'm off of, um, Billington Street.
Oh, yeah.
Past Black Cat Road.
Yep.
And I've been building on a venue, I'm doing it for years.
Yeah.
And I just stopped doing that about a year and a half ago. We sold the house, I guess.
Yeah. You see Bob, Bob around?
I see Bob, he's, he goes to Florida. Uh, but I see him, uh, usually at Duncan Donuts in Kingston across, in the Burger King most mornings.
Yeah.
Kingston Perp.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah.
Old habit.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, they just had to move out of Kingston Center one, whatever that place was, like, four years ago. But, uh, yeah, I think for a platform for a skip.
Yeah, that's right here. He can't sit still, yeah.
I think he's still got the donuts, the original one.
Really?
It's gonna be very, very.
Yeah. Good luck.
Good night.
Good night.
Just tracking along, bills?
What's going?
We got bills.
Advertisements for the manifest.
I think I can make a motion right off of here, there's everything I've got. Right? Well, maybe there's a little bit more. You really put the dollar on, I mean, uh.
I'm sorry, I usually do, don't.
Yeah, I was like, I should do a lot of work on there. And I saw the dollar mark, I was like, oh, maybe not.
You know Mr. Gould, he lives off of, like, Princeton? But he, he was sitting over there, and at the end, he's like, hey, Mark, long time, and I'm like, yeah, it has been a long time. Like, I agree, I don't know who you are, it's been that long. And then like ten minutes after he left, I'm like, I know who that was, but, yeah, it never, you know? Just one of those things, especially out of place, I'm like, I have no idea who this guy is.
Make a motion to pay a bill for, to the Plumpton Halifax Express for a public hearing notice meeting, legal ad number one-zero-three-one-one, in the amount of eighty-four dollars for the Berchtesgaden site plan review.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Get that J a little bit better. Don't, who's gonna send, who's gonna send the please after?
I think it's all stapled together.
No, just be careful.
Don't be screwing up mine.
They're gonna bust Terry anyway, they're gonna be like, they never certified that. No, I don't.
He doesn't approve that eight. Guess it wasn't for ink.
Only 'cause you need three.
Thank you.
There we go. Scrubs, yeah.
Do we have the people to?
Nope.
No, we can't do it.
Okay.
You missed a meeting?
That was me.
But it's all been sent by email, so you can read them.
Oh, we tried.
We tried, yeah.
We got ninety-nine percent.
That's actually hard to get with only like five people, ninety-nine percent.
Well, ninety, ninety-nine percent done. Okay. Any other motions?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second, uh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.